Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Selectments Meeting. It is Tuesday, January 21st, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Would everyone please rise one more time for a moment of silence for Chief John Jack Maloney, who passed this week? Our condolences are extended to his family and loved ones. Chief Maloney was the longtime Fire Chief of the town of Millville and always had in mind the best interests of the town and well-being of his residents. He will be deeply missed. We have nomination papers for the April 7th Annual Town Election are available in the Clerk's office. Signed and completed nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's office no later than February 18th. Yeah, list of positions. We have one member for the BMR School District Committee for a four-year term available, one member for the Board of Health, three-year term, two members for Board of Selectment, three-year term, one position Highway Department, Highway Surveyor, three-year term, one trustee for the Library for a two-year, uh, three-year term, one member Planning Board for a five-year term, one trustee for the Veterans, Veterans Memorial Park for a three-year term, one trustee, non-veteran, Veterans Memorial Park, one, one-year term. And that's to fill an unexpired seat, and then one tree ward position for a three-year And again, all, all nomination papers are due at 5:00 PM on February 18th. The deadline to enter your dog into the Top Dog Contest is January 31st, 2014. The winner will be announced at the Board's February 3 meeting. Yeah, we have details for that. Send in your photo for your, of your dog for our Millville's Top Dog Contest. Send it or drop it off at your, or drop off your photo to the Town Clerk at 8 Central Street. Deadline for entries is January 31st. Please include the owner's name and telephone number as well as the dog's name and, and back, on the back of the photo. A winner will be chosen and the owner notified during the month of February. The winner will, will be issued free of charge, one dog license for 2014. The proud pooch will receive a doggy prize and a certificate naming him or her Millville's Top Dog. Next announcement. The Treasurer Collector reminds property owners that the third and fourth quarter bills for 2014 real estate property, personal property taxes were mailed on December 30th, 2013. The third quarter bills are due on February 3rd, 2014. Bills not paid by the due date will be subject to a 14% interest. Payments can be made as follows. At the Longfellow Municipal Center during business hours, dropped in the tax payment drop box located at the front of the Municipal Center, or mailed to the Clerk's Office at 8 Central Street, or pay online at www.millville.org by clicking on UniPay Online. Property owners who have not received the bills should contact the Collector's Office at 883-5030. Failure to receive a bill does not waive a timely payment or possible interest charges. And that's it for announcements. That was enough. Not bad, and no glasses, too. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have January 6th, 2014, at 2014 at 7:00 PM.
I make a motion to end the minutes for January 6th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, uh, any warrants?
No warrants.
Okay. Okay, so next we have the Millville Elementary School. We have from Northeast Water Solutions, the engineer, Robert Farrar.
Hey.
Good evening, Bob.
Morning, Bob.
Good.
This is copies of the last memo I sent up to, about a week ago, copies.
That's January 13th?
Correct.
Yeah, they should all have them already.
Okay, right, copies, sorry, copies. Just wanted to take the opportunity, just want to give a status update on where things stand at the elementary school, and of course answer any, you know, advisory on the upcoming activities, and of course take any questions and do my best to answer them, as brief as I can. I think as everybody's aware, we initiated operations, give or take, on December 1st, and we were actually authorized or by the Board on December 2nd. But we did get a call on the 1st, so we responded to that. There was a small issue up there. We, we completed initial inspection of the entire system. We've done some repair and replacements of certain components. We had some failed components in the system, did some other things that were more associated with safety or risk minimization that, for one reason or another, really needed to be done. And also, we have conducted our initial assessment of the water system. Originally, we intended to move right into the system rehabilitation over the holiday shutdown, but I felt that, I, I still believe it's important that we have Mass DPs, you know, you know, full buy-in on that. And the meeting has been set up, and of course, anybody, of course, from the town is welcome to attend, from my perspective, Helen's aware of it. It's two, Monday, December, Monday, February 3rd is the meeting, 10 o'clock, at the elementary school. The caveat being if there is a, you know, if there's a weather prohibits that, it'll be rescheduled either for, at the elementary school or at Central, DEP Central Region Headquarters in Worcester. But right now, it's 10 o'clock, 10:00 AM on the 3rd of February, which is a Monday, at the elementary school. The reasons to meet the elementary school is, obviously, we can, we will discuss all the findings, what we, our submissions we've made so far, the work we've done, and they can actually physically look at the system. And again, part of what we'll be doing at that meeting is presenting our evaluations, the actions completed, and what we're proposing to finish things up. To get back to where we stand today, touch on a few things. Upon our initial inspection, we felt there was some deficiencies that needed to be corrected, you know, essentially immediately. One was in going through the bag filter, existing bag filters that actually are in front of the green sand filters. Glenn identified that the bag inside had the incorrect ring size on it, and it was causing a gap that was letting raw well water bypass the bag filter, at least in part.
Yep.
It, it, you know, it took all three minutes to fix that. Just was, take, take the wrong size bag out, put the right size bag in, and, you know, the problem goes away. So, we have a stock of the correct bags, you know, in our, in our warehouse stock, so Glenn just pulled from our stock and tomorrow I'll send.
Bob, so, I don't mean to interrupt, but so what you're saying is the bag filter at that time when you looked at it was not being used?
No, it was, it was online, you know, the housing, you have, the, the, the bag that's inserted to the housing has to be the correct size, the seal problem.
Right, they put the wrong size on it.
It was the incorrect size, okay? So.
The operators responding to that.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah. No question about it. So, in any event, like I said, Glenn identified it. He had, he had a couple on the truck, put them in there, and we pulled from stock just to make sure that we're, you know, backup, backup supply there. And, and so what happens is when you have a gap in the, in the seal, you get, you get water bypassing.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't the end of the world, but it's, it's a silly thing, it should be, you know, it should be taken care of, so it was. The existing pH monitor on the system, which monitors the pH of the water going into distribution, I've mentioned before that it's still functioning, but this has been going on for a while now. It, it, for whatever reason, it no longer has the ability to download the data from its memory onto, say, a data stick, so then we can, you know, you know, download it and put it in an Excel spreadsheet, and, and, so it leaves a manual function there. What we're going to do there is either two things. It doesn't appear, we've been working with the manufacturer, it doesn't appear that there's any sort of fix available to it. No one knows why it's problematic. We have a, a backup pH monitor that we, it's our own, we can put it in there while we figure out what's the best corrective action to take, okay? And there's some things I'm going to go over with Mass DEP, because I want to go, because we have to do certain reporting. And I want, I want, what I'm trying to do is simplify the process of, I want to download the data electronically, so we can blow it into the right reporting form electronically and just save a lot of manual effort, okay? Chemical day tank agitators, you have three electric drive agitators. Two of them were dead, and the third one was in fairly tough shape, still functioning, but in tough shape. We replaced all three, and Glenn cleaned up the, the one that was still functioning, and we have it as a spare. But we did, one other thing that was equally important, I think, is you don't have to continuously blend the chemistry. Basically, our own experience is with the, with the critical chemistries, if you agitate it for about 30 minutes twice a day, that's fine. So, you know, a quick trip to Granger's, some timers, his next trip up, you just wired him in through timers, so they just cycle on for 30 minutes twice a day, and they'll keep it well blended. You get a nice uniform blend on, on the, on the chemistry, which gives you a little more, you know, consistency as far as the treatment, okay, obviously. If you don't keep it blended properly, you get density settling and density stratification. It's thin on top, thick on the bottom. And, and it just one more, issued it to eliminate. So that, that was another easy one to do. You want to pass around a few pictures, okay? The, the first picture, I'll start here, we'll just pass that around. What that illustrates is, is you see three of your chemical day tanks, the, the yellow tanks, and you see two of them are very heavily caked with, with solids. The third one looks clean, and then you have another one adjacent that's clean. I cleaned this one, and I cleaned the one that's cleaner of the previous picture. The other two illustrate what they've been looking like. When you get chemicals caked up like this, and we've had similar chemicals caked up on the motors, that's what'll kill, you know, a motor, because you're going to get corrosion to the motor, you're going to get, it just, you just destroy it. So, the phrase we use, although it's a little bit of an exaggeration, is I want to be able to walk in there and eat off the floor.
Yep.
If you can do that, you keep things clean, everything just works better and lasts long, okay? So, what you're seeing is, this is what your chemical day tanks will look like as long as we're involved with your system, okay? And the metering pump is on top, the day tank, it's clean, it's neat, it's organized, it's calibrated, okay? You want to minimize any problems. Also, obviously, when you're going, when you're getting inspected, you want to have it, have it look as good as you can, because you don't want to have, you know, spills. Speaking of spills, there's one thing that is in on this memo. There was some extra chemical containers in the room, and you need to have those in secondary, on secondary containment pallets or otherwise have secondary containment. So we brought up, again, from our, just from our warehouse stock, Glenn brought up a containment pallet. So all liquid chemistries, and for that matter, all dry chemistries in that room are now on containment pallets. And when I was up on Friday, Glenn and I were on Friday, just doing routine work on the system, and Greenie came in and asked me about, I guess you had an insurance inspection shortly before, last Friday?
Mm-hmm.
And the inspector said, listen, you have all these open floor drains in, in the boiler room there, what can you do about that? Well, there's two things you do. One is you have good spill containment, and two, I'll be sending up to Greenie, there's a, there's, there's, there's plugs you can put in the floor drains that are removable, and there's a bunch of different varieties of them, and if, if you've done any work in plumbing or in any kind of construction, you're probably familiar with them. They're inexpensive, relatively easy to do. You don't want to cement up your floor drains, because if you ever did say have some water on the floor, you need to get rid of it. The problem is you have chemical, chemistry on the floor, we can't have that going out to, you know, out, out with the storm drain, out into the, into the, you know, into the environment, so.
Right.
I'll send Greenie that detail, and I'll take it from there. Chemical feed metering pumps, it appears that there's been some partial rebuilds of them, as, as I've mentioned before. Those should go through complete head rebuilds once a year, because the heads, the liquid ends have a bad habit of lasting anywhere from 12 to 15 months, and, you know, sometimes they'll last a little longer. We say, listen, just rebuild them once a year, and you don't worry about, you don't want to find out about a, about a, a liquid end failure after it happens, because that, that means your chemistry feed has been off, and with the attendant problems with that. So, we rebuild them once a year. You had some partial rebuilds, there was some rebuild kits that were there, some of the parts were scavenged out of them. Glenn's going to, Glenn's just going to go through and rebuild each of the pumps, and he'll check each one. If it's been partially rebuilt, he'll finish the rebuild. If it's a full rebuild, we'll just take care of it. And that's part and parcel of the contract we have with you, so we're just, we're just doing, you know, we're doing what we have to do. Today, we actually executed the first formal part of the system refurbishment and upgrade. Glenn installed the pulsing flow meter in the front of the system, so we now have what they call the flow pace control of the hypochlorite feed in front of the green sand filters. This was a bone of contention. There's not going to be any market improvement in the green sand filter operation by doing this, however, that will give a strict conformance with Section 6 of DEP's regulations, which is what they wanted. So, that was done today, and, and we will, of course, show that to them when they come in for the inspection. Now, we did also, we did a diagnostic evaluation of the green sand filtration system. We actually started this on, on December 1st. We started just monitoring data. I think I mentioned to you in the meeting on the 2nd that there was zero chlorine residual going into the green sand filters, let alone coming out of the green sand filters. Glenn, we discussed it, and we increased the chlorine dosage. We brought up to where it needs to be, basically. We actually, we brought up to the minimum, we're playing with it. What I will tell you is, within a couple of days, the performance of the green sand filters came back in line where it's supposed to be, removing the iron, removing the manganese. Mid-December, I think it was the 17th of December, I know we submitted electronically the reports to you, I think it was December 17th, we did a full range of the analytical work required, you know, by the state of Massachusetts for compliance monitoring. We also did additional analytical work. You, you know, we've been doing it with field test kits, this was to do it with, with chemical analysis in the laboratory, which is more precise than the field kits. And what it's demonstrated, and I did put a little table into this memo, on the third page, Table 1, and you can see that we've had some variable and some fairly substantial amounts of iron and manganese going in. What you see in Table 1, by the way, you see that greater than 5 milligrams, we're, the field kit we're using, if it's more than 5, it just tells you it's more than 5. The manganese actually was higher than .3 or .4, we know that also. But what you, what you notice is we're getting all, almost all non-detectables coming out. ND is non-detectable, as opposed to, you know, .2, .3, .5, you know, where it was not only exceeding the secondary water limit, it was exceeding the health advisory, which is .3. Iron, it's been up and down a little bit, we know why, we were playing some games with it, we don't expect any issues. And you'll also notice in the distribution system, we had some very good values also, and everything was in compliance, okay? The, we then did a further analytical evaluation, because we had concerns, I think I mentioned to you, that a portion of the media was probably fouled to the point where it wasn't functioning, or at least not functioning properly, and that is indeed the case. And in fact, we've already cut back, originally the system was set where it was regenerating or backwashing every 7,000 to 8,000 gallons. We cut that back by 2,000 gallons already, and as of today, I've directed Glenn to cut it back by another 1,000, because we're seeing, the filters, when they get to the end of their cycles, we're seeing leakage, manganese leakage. We noted this on Friday a little bit, we're still in compliance. We had it again today, a little higher, still in compliance, but now you're on the edge of compliance with secondary limit. So I said, Glenn, bring it down to 1,000, because by shortening the cycle, what's happening is by increasing the oxygen dosage to the green sand, we're restoring its oxidative capacity to remove dissolved iron and manganese. It's a bigger issue with manganese. The leakage we're getting tells us we, some of the, some of the media can't be restored. It's, it's either reverse re-fouled or has to be removed and cleaned in the vessels. So I'd said before, I projected about at least 30% was fouled. It may be a little higher than that, okay, based upon what we found Friday and today, okay? But we'll move forward with that. But the good news here is that, A, you're back in compliance again, you meet all drinking water standards, period. B, we also, at the higher chlorine dosage where it's supposed to be, we ran total trihalomethanes, which is one of the two groups of chlorine disinfection byproducts. That was in compliance. That was another concern the state has, which is why they were concerned, like they wanted to cut back the chlorine dosage, which is what caused the green sand to stop functioning correctly.
Yep.
You're in compliance. We hadn't run HAA's yet. That'll be getting done in, in the course of a routine analysis, that'll be, we had to run VOCs, and the total trihalomethanes are part of the VOC analysis, so we had the data. It's costly enough, I didn't want to run into the extra, extra cost just to run an HA analysis. If the TTHMs are in compliance, my expectation is the other, other portion of the disinfection byproducts will also be in compliance, because it always has been. Also, we ran a tetrahydrofurin, that's part of the VOC analysis, and it was non-detectable, okay? So we feel pretty good. So, as of mid-December, based on certified laboratory with chemical analysis, that system is in compliance. It is producing a potable drinking water, and there's no reason why it can't be consumed. Now, you're still on, to my knowledge, bottled water in the elementary school. What I'd like to do is wait until we get a response from DEP. We've submitted all the data, plus this memo, plus all the regular reporting we've done. I want to go over this with them on February 3rd, and I think if we have concurrence at that point with the ongoing data that we have, I think we'll, you know, I think at that point, we then would make the formal recommendation that the school can go back on just the well water, as opposed to continuing bottled water.
One question, Bob.
Sure.
On this green filter system, you're saying like 30% of it might be contaminated, you might have to change some of the green filter.
Well, we're planning to change it all, John.
Okay.
But we, we've already got it in stock, we, you know, we ordered the new media, and we're going to do full change outs, because at this point, we've done what we can do as far as trying to recover the capacity in the vessels with, with back washes and chemical agents.
You're going to start fresh again?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get it out of there, we can do, we can do it, we can do it in our shop.
Right.
I can do it more aggressive, and then we can, then we'll take samples of it as it comes out, send that off for analysis. We'll do the best we can to recover it, you know, with, with aggressive chemical treatments and backwashing. I'll do that in my shop, and we'll, and we'll recheck it and see what we can do with it. And however much is good, we'll, we'll put that into Millville's dedicated reserve supply, because you do have attrition losses, so you'll have to replace some. Every year you put, you know, you lose, say, 3% to 5%, just from, just from abrasion, you'll lose that, so you're not throwing the money away, we'll, we'll, it'll be dedicated stock for Millville, and we'll use it as we need it to replenish.
Okay.
One other thing I'll bring, not to, not to get things too kind of diluted here, but one of the things we did, if you look at the state, you'll say, gee, Bob, why on, I noticed a couple of days where the chlorine residual went up. What we had done is we had, we knew, we were trying to help the system recover its, its oxidative capacity of the media. So we cranked up the chlorine dosage, because what we noticed was happening is that even though we kept increasing it, you'll notice the residual coming out was still relative, it was better than it had been, but still relatively low, and then all of a sudden, it came right up. What that's telling us is a certain amount of the chlorine we were putting in was getting consumed in regenerating the green sand media. And probably as of, give or take, a week ago, we've probably done the best we can do as far as bringing back its capacity as it sits there in the vessels. We've done what we can do with it. And that's why I'm saying, as of today, I told Glenn, cut it back, cut the cycle back by another 1,000 gallons, take it down to 5,000 gallon cycles, because we're seeing leakage. You're, you're just getting very close to the manganese limit, so it's a, shorten the cycle again, so, because we're, we're getting to the edge of the capacity for the, for the media to take soluble manganese and oxidize it into a particular, remove it by filtration. So, the good news here is that things are letting out pretty much the way we anticipated they would. The water's back in compliance where you want to be, and it's demonstrating consistent performance, and I think we're going to have, I think things will go quite well with the review with, with DEP on the 3rd. At that point, what we would do is then move into the, you know, do the refurbishment of the two green sand filter vessels. One of the things that we're, we're thinking strongly of doing is we talked to the, to Inversand, they're the manufacturer of the green sand media, because we've developed a protocol with them, where we can, what we'll do is, we're going to condition the new media in our shop, in our, we have vessels in our shop that we can use to do this. Put it back in the drums, bring them up here, that way we just vacuum out the old material, open up one vessel, vacuum it all out, put the new media in, it's ready to go. And then just do one final backwash and, and we'll back online. You have that done in a matter of hours, as opposed to if we had to put the new media in here, go through the two-stage chemical conditionings or the back washes, it could take us a couple of days. So this way, it'll minimize any possible disruption to the school activities, because you operate on one filter, it will work with the second one, and then the second one comes online, we'll go back to the first one. So we'll do that in our shop, just makes life a lot easier. We just wanted to make sure that we had the protocol worked out with the manufacturer, and, and this is done, this is not any, you know, you can do this, we just want to make sure we have the exact protocol worked out, because we want to maintain our warranty, you know, the media warranty with the manufacturers, we have that, so we're in good shape with that. Worst-case scenario is we would do it on your February break at the school, but I think using this alternative methodology, we could probably deal with just at a point of convenience, and then whatever, whatever, you know, we'll just develop the schedule, and it seems to be a much shorter schedule. Beyond that, you know, things are going well. What we're doing is part of our routine visits is every time we come up here, we're, we're inspecting something else, cleaning things up, okay? You know, checking wiring, checking terminations, physical condition, operating condition. And I guess that I'm real here on Friday, and, and some of the analytical work, the field work is painstaking, so I just took a brush and a wet rag, and I was cleaning up the chemical tanks. You know, you want to maximize, you know, the use of your time onsite, and often you find a little things like that also, so. It'll, it'll take a month or two, but we'll get things, I think, in great shape.
You're doing your preventive maintenance, and you're doing your checklist.
Yeah, exactly.
You're going through, which is what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, one, another thing I'm, we're going to come back at you with, okay? I'll just give you a little inkling of that right now. It'll be a few months. I think there's a, I'd like, we'll make a presentation to, to the Board a few months down the road. We'd like to look at increasing your level of automation as far as your monitoring, even with the ability to do remote monitoring from our office, okay? The reason that that might be beneficial, and we'll do a cost-benefit analysis for you, is because that might be a way to reduce the labor cost of the number of site visits. We think we can get you down to one day a week. You're at two days a week, plus anything else that we think we need to do, okay, right now.
Right.
We would, we won't do that until, unless A, the town agrees, and B, we're 100% confident that it'll be the way to go. We want to get, we want to get a few months under our belt, get things squared away, get the upgrade done, refurbishment done. But that would ultimately be, I think, a relatively significant cost reduction for the town.
Okay.
Looking both short-term and long-term, it'll be a cost reduction for the town.
Okay.
And.
Oh, is that done over the internet, is that how you do it?
Yeah, we just do it over the internet. And, I mean, you, you, through, you can do it, you can do it, say, through your telephone provider, you can do it through your cable provider, whatever. I mean, obviously, you've got cable service into, or you've got internet service into the school, so.
Right.
We just, as long as we can get to a, you know, an internet connection, you go anywhere in the world, the signals, so we're stuck pretty well. And we've already got all the software to set up. Another nice thing is, the way we have it set up in our offices, we, we do this work in many different states. Every state's got their own unique reporting forms, and if we can pull, say, your pH data off.
Okay.
We can pull it in, and we can blow it right into the reporting form. Another nice thing is, the way we have it set up in our offices, we do this work in many different states. Every state's got their own unique reporting forms. And if we can pull, say, your pH data off,
Okay.
we can pull it in, and we can blow it right into the reporting form. So when it's time to report, all we've got to do is a couple of keystrokes, and we can actually send it off electronically, or we can download it.
To the state, right?
Yeah, and it just takes a lot of manual labor out of it, a ton of manual, and it's extremely accurate. And, you know, plus, if you turn the analysis and things like that, we'll do it all.
Yeah, I agree, so once the filters are at a controllable state, and they're religiously, every week, the same, basically.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Then you'll feel comfortable, and then we can cut labor costs down, so it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, you're absolutely, yeah, that's the intent, is, once we get to a real comfort level here, and the operating data supports, you know, that conclusion, if you will.
Okay.
And the nice thing is, we designed that panel, you know, in 2010, Sheridan Electric did a real nice job with the panel in there. It's all set up for this. You know, it's a few wires, a little bit of programming, you know, one little two-by-two black box goes in, puts a plug in, and gives the air going in there, and we're off to the races. So it's pretty straightforward.
The swag, man, the investment.
I'm sorry?
An estimate, a rough estimate.
Don't want to give you one right now, simply because I want to see where the system's performing, and if there's anything else you want to modify or change, okay?
I want to put a magnet to it?
Well, let's put it this way. You're probably looking at, you know, a one-year payback or something like that, based on your cost reduction. I'll put it that way, okay? Because I think it's going to affect you a pretty good cost reduction, and so it makes it very advantageous. In any event, that's the summation here, and of course, any other questions, you know, just feel free to ask. I'll do the best I can in answering them.
It sounds like you've got a good handle on it, the major changes that you needed to do.
Yeah, it's going well so far.
Sounds like there was some equipment that was broken that needed to be repaired.
A few things, yeah, a few things, yeah. One other thing is, on all of the reporting to the State of Massachusetts, the DEP, Helen gets a parallel electronic copy. So Helen will have hard copies from us, and she'll have electronic copies. And we tend to report typically by, see, the 10th or the 15th of the following month. I can't quite remember now which it is, Mel knows, so, you know. Some states does by the 15th, some states does by the 10th. I can't quite remember what Massachusetts is. But, so this way, so Helen's getting the information in real time. And so the town can keep its records, it can completely update, whatever we have, the town has, and the state has.
Thank you for the good news.
Yeah, so it's going in the right direction, all right?
Great.
And you all, though, feel free, you know, Helen can hot talk me anytime you want. If you need anything, just let me know.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, next we have the reports of the town officials, and we have tonight's council on aging.
I had sent an email back to the town, to the Board of Selectmen, on September 30th, seeking support for what I believed were funds, or what the Council on Aging believed were funds that were due to us from Blackstone, from the severed transportation agreement that we had there. Looking back at it, we had gone on, and we had taken a look, multiple members of the Council on Aging had gone on to the Board of, the Council on Aging and Blackstone, their town meeting, or their group meeting, to take a look at their conversation. It looked like there was twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, twenty-seven thousand six hundred six dollars and forty-one cents that was in the van account. And that was reportedly at the Blackstone COA meeting, that that was as of September 2012. So we pursued, the Council on Aging talked about it, and we ended up sending letters over to the Blackstone Council on Aging, Dorothy Clifford, and to Jean Dorian, I believe is how you say her last name. She's the Director of the Senior Center, requesting that they meet with us and talk with us about reimbursement through that account. We felt that, looking at the transportation agreement that was there, that the town of Millville should be able to recoup twenty percent of that fund, which was there. So we were targeting five thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents to come back to us. Ellen Bowen had gone to that meeting, and they had received our letters that day, and they weren't able to make any decisions. What they said was it needed to go to Mr. Keys, so we followed up with a letter to Mr. Keys, because we didn't hear from him, even though the initial letters were supposedly handed to him. So we did send him a letter requesting resolution of the matter, and I met with Mr. Keys last week. He seemed open to a conversation about it, and asked me that, where in the agreement it stated about funds being shared. It seems to me that it's, throughout the agreement, it's implied that we, Millville, had a certain percentage that we paid for insurance, gasoline, driver fees, all of that. It is only good practice, business practice, and in my eyes, common, basic decency, that we would then split the profits that came as a result of that. So Mr. Keys shared with me that the fund was about twenty-four thousand dollars. He had a spreadsheet in front of him, although he did not choose to share that with me, and let me look at the spreadsheet. But I let him know at that point in time that I felt that, as the representative on the Council on Aging, that I was coming to speak with him, because I felt that the money was due the residents of Millville, and that we were going to pursue it. And he wanted to know what we were willing to do. And I didn't feel the need to get both Board of Selectmen together to do it. I agreed with him that their council and our council could get that done. And so he would like his legal counsel to deal with our legal counsel and get that done. Looking at the agreement that I have from 2009, it doesn't state specifically, from what I could see, that there was going to be a share of any donations that were paid by the riders. But we did pay into that, our residents paid into that, and we have a van of our own coming, so I believe that we'd do that money. So I would like to pursue that avenue with him. And I do not want to let him off the hook or give them any time for that, so.
That's the only way you're going to get it, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
He's not going to.
I, so basically.
He was very cordial to me that day.
We, our partnership was, we owned twenty percent of it. So we should own twenty percent of donations up to the day our partnership was seven.
Well, according to Mr. Keys, he came up with the term of fifteen percent. He couldn't show me in the contract where he was getting that. I let him know that there were multiple percentages in the contract that I had noted. There was, you know, there's twenty percent, there's fifty percent for this, there's twenty-five percent for that. So, you know, the percentages and the split are kind of, you know, all over the place.
That's funny, because when we wanted to renew a contract, they said that we used the van twenty percent of the time. Now he's saying fifteen? Oh, because it's to their benefit, sorry, thank you.
Well, I wasn't there at that point in time, and as I said to him when he started to go into it, I'm not going to deal in rumors and all of that that was there, because I wasn't present. But on the agreement that we have, on page three, number six, number six says that each party shall keep accurate records of services performed, cost incurred, and reimbursement and contributions received. So I would assume that Mr. Brackett, is that his name?
Yes.
Could speak with them and should be able to obtain a copy of the spreadsheet that shows the donations that were made, and the percentage, we should go from there. But I would think that we would pursue aggressively twenty percent of that. You know, that comes up to fifty-five hundred dollars and change, and that's money that, you know, you have all supported the van, the Council on Aging really appreciates that, as does the seniors in town. So that goes towards funding our driver and getting that done, as well as, you know, gasoline prices and that. So, you know, this van is important to the seniors and the disabled in this town. You know, and without it, I think you're going to end up with a lot of shut-ins from that. So it's an important aspect for us to have in place.
It's important to everybody.
Yep.
So what you're looking for is you're looking for legal counsel.
I would like legal counsel to go get the money.
I'd like to make a motion that Council on Aging gets legal counsel to straighten this background as soon as possible.
Every second, then. Any further discussion? Anything for, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
For sure. Yeah, thank you, that's a couple hours' worth of research in the IC, so.
It's a lot of fun.
And I know how much you guys get paid to do what you do.
Well, the seniors are near and dear to my heart, my heart, I love seniors, so. But the Council on Aging has done a lot of work, and I think, you know, they're trying to open the center more, trying to put more programming in place for the people, so, you know, and I think it's ethically and morally inappropriate for the town of Blackstone to hold that money.
Is there anything else that you need to address?
Not right now. So I don't have to do anything with this, who, how does this work? Tell me that.
Does the board want to put a limit on town council's time? It's an approximate five thousand dollar advantage to the town to get the funds, but.
We need the funds right away, so we don't need to jump on this, you know, like.
As you all say, so.
We don't want him to spend five thousand dollars of his time trying to get it, so.
Well, you know what, I almost wouldn't mind. I'd rather him have it than the Blackstone. But I don't want to give him that much.
I can pull all of my emails and that, and pull the information that we have pulled together to give him. I'll be available for him to help, I have no problem going after what we need.
Yeah, if you can give him everything you've got, shorten his labor up.
He did review the contract, was it over a year ago when we were dealing with Blackstone? He reviewed the contract briefly, and his initial, without spending a great deal of time on it, his initial feeling was that we didn't have a chance, because it wasn't spelled out. And I think Mrs. Leesha has a good point, so, you know, we can bring this back to him with what she's.
I think it's implied, and I think, you know, at our meeting, Claudette's in the audience, you know, Mrs. Bowen brought it up, and I think she's very appropriate, that, you know, it is a business that two people separated, and the profits went to one, and that's highly inappropriate. And so I do believe that the profits are due to this town, and I would help Mr. Brackett and I happy.
Okay, so what Mr. Brackett has to say.
And I don't feel real positive about working with Blackstone, but they do have two different members on their board now that I, helped me feel a little better about dealing with them. You know, we may, we may get through a little more positive this time than we did in the past with the last board that was sitting over there, so. I do feel more comfortable with their five members now than I did a year and a half ago.
Well, Mr. Dubois, is that how you say his name?
Dubois, yeah, Dubois.
He was one of the people that we CC'd on the letter. We were hoping to be able to resolve it, Council on Aging to Council on Aging, but their Council on Aging Chair and their Director of their Senior Center were very open as part of their meeting, stating that they don't control their budget. So, you know, I know we manage our budget, so I don't see why they wouldn't. But, you know, it is something that I think they are very hesitant, and there's great trepidation on their part as to what they can and can't do. But like I said, I'm available for Mr. Brackett, I will help him get whatever I need to get together, and so will the council.
I will send him an email, and I will copy you on that, and then it'll be up to the two of you.
Has Mr. Keys reached out to you?
No.
He implied that day that he would be calling you.
Yeah, right.
What's the basis? The basis, how much is Brackett's base?
Uh, one forty-five and a half.
Yeah, one forty-five. So now that the council's sitting here, I ran into Rep. Curles over the weekend. And he wanted me to let the council know that when I see them, which I happen to live with one member, but he went to your Christmas party.
Yes.
He went last Monday to the luncheon, and just wanted to express his thoughts on our senior center. Couldn't believe the organization and the great, you know, the help that just comes together and all volunteer. He's, you know, in all the towns he's been in, he's very, was very impressed, and.
That's great.
He just wanted me to relay that to the council, so.
Well, and you, I think you saw the email I sent you, we also got awarded another grant, so we're going to keep, you know, the chief is the one who, thank you, turned us on to grants, so, you know, we're going to keep pursuing them. I think we've now, we're in the process of pursuing our fourth grant. So we're going to keep doing that and seeing what's out there for them.
That's all I have.
Any questions for me? Thank you for your support.
Did you, Pat, did you want to bring up the question with respect to the income deposited, being deposited into a revolving account?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't understand that.
The donations from the gun safety, is that the one?
No, this is the rental income.
Oh, rental income, yes.
We've rented the center twice.
Yes.
And that's money that, as part of our council meeting, we did vote for that to be put into the van, the van line.
Right.
So Helen had raised a point that that was not possible for us to do.
Yeah, that's, it's not legally, you're not legally able or authorized to make such a vote. Any income has to go into the general fund.
So by establishing a revolving account.
Revolving account. Has to be approved by town meeting.
Right, and that would be theirs and only theirs, so that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, so.
So how do we establish a revolving account?
You would just need to request of the board to include that on the next annual town meeting warrant. If you'd like to do that tonight, they can vote on it, and I'll be sure to get that on.
Okay, I would like to do that.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for reminding me, Helen.
That'll make it easier in the future.
Thank you very much.
And then the gun safety chief, that, those are donations specifically for?
Right, that was, if the police department was using the building free of charge, and the vendor simply made a donation, that's fine.
Thank you.
It's just actual rental income, and they're right, filling out the form, and they're writing a check.
I already knew the answer, because I have my resources, but I just wanted everybody to understand that, you know, that's, that's not.
And I don't think the council, you know, tried to deceive anybody, we just didn't realize that that was not our option.
So, honest mistake?
So.
So any, anybody at home that wants to donate to the senior center, please do. And just be specific on where you want the money to go, so it goes where you want it, and that's it.
Okay.
And you're going to follow up with the tax ID issue with the senior?
I did, I did follow up with them, and I spoke to two individuals. I did not hear back from the second one, so I have another call-in to her to find out what exactly happened.
Okay.
So she's saying it was like that from the setup.
Well, our Unibank representative just changed, so I'm sure the new guy that's in there is having a good look at everything. So it could very well have been that way for all these years, but it can't be any longer.
Okay, so they'll change it. All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no, uh, and no correspondence, unless anybody would like to, I mean, everybody, the correspondence we do have, everybody involved was also copied on emails, so. Okay, so we have no appointments, no resignations, thank you. So Helen, Executive Secretary's report.
Yep, there are actually a couple of items that are actually part of your correspondence that do need to be addressed, one of which is the correspondence dated January 13th from the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
That's right.
And this is an expected letter in connection with the roof project at the elementary school.
Yeah.
And they're working with the MSBA to get the loan, to get that done. They now are telling us by this correspondence that they are, they have voted to incur debt.
Yep.
So at this time, although, I'm going to, I'm going to phrase it how town council actually said it. Although it's in a matter of operational law, not required, for, in a practical matter, it is required. So legally, you don't have to hold a special town meeting to address this, but practically, you do. It's confusing. But having worked the timeframe earlier today, it really narrows down when we can hold this special town meeting to the week of February 24th. Because if the special town meeting does vote to approve this, the language has to be received by the town clerk in writing within thirty-five days of the election.
Yep.
So if you vote to hold the meeting tonight, you sign the warrant at your next meeting, it's going to be posted for two weeks, so that limits you the week of February 24th.
And that's not school vacation week.
It's not, it's the week after.
Is this one of those things where Blackstone approves, we have to, we.
No, absolutely not.
Because this is. Because this is the Millville school, Blackstone probably won't do anything with it, just like when we got this paperwork for their elementary school, we didn't have to do anything with it.
It's only the middle school and the high school that both towns are responsible.
Right, and if you remember, we had the same issue, same situation last year with the roof on the high school, which we had to have approved. So, I did speak with Mr. Davis, the moderator, today, and he was okay with Monday, February 24th, if that's the day you'd like to do. It is possible to go to, yeah, it's possible to go to March 3rd, but March 3rd is also the deadline by which we have to notify the town clerk, and if something happens and we have to delay it...
Because if we don't get a warrant on that day, we're up the creek. Yeah, go for the 24th, and if we can't get a warrant, we'll start for the 23rd, I mean, for the 3rd, but...
So, what I would need you to do is make a motion to vote to hold a special town meeting on Monday, the 24th, and I also need you to vote, unfortunately, you're gonna have to read the entire article.
Who's got glasses?
As you want it to...
I'm around town 24th. Where you going? Want help?
And the reason being is it's an MSBA requirement that you, they're gonna ask for certified copies of these minutes of the meeting, so you need to read it.
So, we'll be voting for it, yeah, exclusion?
Correct. And then if the town's people on February 24th vote to approve it, it will appear on the ballot on April 7th.
Yes, I'm elected. Who wears glasses? Yep, that's wrong.
I'm moving the town hereby approve the 1,530,558 loan authorized by the Blackstone Regional School District for the purpose of paying the cost of replacing the roof and its pertinent components at the Millville Elementary School located at 122 Bertha L. Way, Millville, Mass., including payment of all costs incidental related there to the project, which proposed repaired project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve the, preserve an asset otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended in the direction of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District Committee. The MSBA grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the district occurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that is the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1, 57 and 74 one hundredths percent of eligible approved project cost is determined by the MSBA or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its eligible share of the amount required for the payment of interest and principal of said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Massachusetts Law Chapter 59, Section 21(c), otherwise known as Proposition 2 and 1/2, in that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA.
Okay, he's the, he's the motion. I'll make the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So, that's the article, and I would just need a motion to call the special town meeting, and would you want it at 6:30 or at 7?
7. It'd be better to get, easier to get a warrant by 7.
I'll make the motion to have the special town meeting for 7 o'clock on February 24th.
24th.
At 7 o'clock.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the other piece of correspondence in connection with the building code enforcement official. I would just like, and I know Selectman Barrett verbally advised me that the building inspector does plan to apply for an extension, but I'd just like to include that in the record for the minutes, so if you want to just repeat for the board what you told me earlier.
Yeah, he's, he's going to the state for an extension on his certification deadline for the, for the end of this month. So, I'll also ask him to send us an email on that, so we have it in writing. And that's, that's all he had to say about that.
And then also with respect to the extra payment for the computer time, you also advised me that he does not want to be paid, and I also want to include that for the record, just because I don't want to ever be accused of not paying somebody what they would do, so...
Right, I told him that he would only get 13.50 an hour, 'cause that's what our bylaw is for that type of clerical position. So, with that particular step, that's all he would get, an hour. So, he didn't feel it was worth the time and effort, $13.50 an hour. But he did complete the training, so he is done with that. And also, he will be recording all, all our data, our new data system, all permits will be reported as soon as he can do it. He has to do all his state mandated recordings have to be done first. The state requires that after a certificate of occupancy is issued, that all those reports go to the assessors so that the properties can be reassessed. At that time, obviously, he'll definitely have it complete in the data system. So, but he'll do them as, you know, as soon as he can with the, you know, he gets two hours of office time a week, he puts lots of other hours into inspections and just talking with residents on how to pull permits, you know, what they need to do, stuff like that. So, he has way more than two hours a week of work that he does do, even though his office is only open for two hours. So, he's gonna, he understands the program perfectly fine, and he's got no issues on using it, he's very computer savvy, so... So, that was my discussion with him.
So, the extension he's asking for goes to when?
They, they give 30-day extensions.
So, that would be what, and the...
And he's just gotta go take the, take the test, and that's it.
There's a whole battery test, isn't there?
Yeah. He wasn't even nervous about it when I talked. Oh, yeah, that's, that's easy, they're gonna take care of that, and they're gonna give me an extension.
And if he hypothetically doesn't pass, what do we do?
Well, then the state requires that he's removed, and we have to find a new inspector.
So, this extension would go to the end of February?
Right.
Is it February, no, or January?
Well, right now, it expires January 31st, so if what he advised was he's looking for one month, then it would be the end of February, but I will put a call-in to Kimberly just to make sure the board is all set, because legally, effective January 31st, my understanding is if the board doesn't have an extension in its hand, legally, he cannot be the building inspector, so I will just confirm with Kimberly that as long as he's applied, we're all set, because I don't know when their next meeting of their review board is to consider extensions, so, I will check with her just to cover the board. Yes, and the next piece of correspondence, I'm glad Chief Landry's here, is with respect to unregistered motor vehicles. We've had a situation where there are unregistered motor vehicles up at what used to be Moody's Garage, which I've outlined for you in the memo. This is the first time we've had a situation where...
That's right on the state line, headed towards Wright's Farm.
Oh, okay, that one over there, I'm thinking of the...
Yeah, this is the first time we've had a situation where we've mailed out the letter and the owner hasn't complied with it, so it requires enforcement. According to Chief Landry, it's the building inspector who enforces this, so I'm just looking for your guidance on whether you do want to enforce the situation, if you want to send another letter first, how you want to proceed with that.
So, where is this place? Is this the place?
It's right up after Providence Street.
When you cross Providence Street, the abandoned gas station.
Okay.
Yeah, right on the street.
You've got a car sitting on a flatbed now or something, right?
Yeah, okay. So, all right, now, then the other correspondence for that same, excuse me, same property, is they, they contracted Lakeshore Environmental to do soil testing, but...
Yeah, that really has nothing to do with the town, they inform us of that, just so that he should apply for a Class II license, we're aware of it, but he does not have a Class II currently.
Right, so, now that we know that they are out there and living, because they told us they got Lakeshore Environmental, then they should be responding about this as well. No, I would say, send them and CC the building inspector a letter, and then we're gonna have to put it into the zoning enforcement's hands to make sure those vehicles get removed. He's allowed one.
My, my feeling, I think it's a bylaw, adopted by the town residents, and it needs to be enforced.
Okay, I would just be looking for a motion from the board to proceed with what the chairman just said.
All right, all in favor? So, while we're on motor vehicles, what's going on with Mark's garage? Which one's that? Chestnut Street.
That's the one next to the event?
Yeah, on the side or behind the men's car, however you want.
I seen that moving, I seen a trailer, a guy was moving cars out of it.
This week?
Yeah, but it's still a mess, still a whole bunch of cars there, and junk and everything else, so...
My understanding, he does not have a Class II license, I have not received an application for one as yet. The zoning board is suggesting that if and when the board does receive an application, that they give him, again, a conditional license like you did last year, and what I told zoning was if and when the time comes and we get the application, that's up to the board to decide at that time, but I've yet to receive an application. So, as of today, he is not licensed for Class II activity.
He's in violation.
He's been, his license has been expired for 21 days, correct?
So, that, like Joe said, it's bylaw, it's in violation, we need to send him a letter, tell the building inspector that same, same procedure.
So, I don't, now I don't know if somebody needs to fill out the complaint form, or are we just sending a letter to the building inspector, or...
What is the deal with that?
I don't understand why we gotta fill out a complaint form. He did, no, this, this, here me out, I mean, as a selectman, he's in violation, and it's our job to make sure that he abide by the, by the town bylaws, so I don't feel that as a selectman, or any of you people, or the other selectmen, need to fill out a form to pursue this. We tell the building inspector he needs to go enforce it.
Well, the building inspector did say that an email is legal documentation, so an email to him about a property with a concern that is visible from the street, which it is, is visible from two streets.
So, is the, I just want to understand it, is the complaint that he's running the business without the license, or just that there are vehicles on the property?
Unregistered vehicles.
Okay, so that, I would just need a report from the police department.
He's got a bunch of cars over there with no...
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't prove from either street whether he's servicing vehicles. We'd have to be there with a vehicle camera, so we can't file that complaint. We can file the unregistered vehicle complaint.
Yeah, absolutely, we can get that out.
All right, and then, you guys would file that?
Yes.
What I would do is I ask the police department to get me a written report, the chief provides that to me, then I send the letter out, and the process begins. They follow up after 30 days.
So, the written report from them is, is the complaint form for the zoning enforcement?
Because he's abiding by the bylaws.
Okay, perfect, so that's the motion.
So, we'll get that out, okay, very good.
No, I wouldn't want to be pulling out of my driveway like the Florians do every day and have to see that, it's...
I just wanted to let everybody know that budget requests were sent out to all departments. Selectman Raposa and I met with the finance committee last Wednesday evening, and budgets are due February 7th. Same as in years past, those departments who are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the budgets will come to you, those who are elected, their budgets will go directly to the finance committee. The finance committee and town accountant will be at the board's next meeting on February 3rd. Marilyn will be prepared to give the revenue projections, and we want to work with the finance committee on figuring out how we're gonna proceed with some of the items that need to be addressed at the elementary school. A memo also went out to all departments that their annual reports are due February 13th for 2013. I've got on the agenda for February 3rd about the Memorial Day Parade Committee, I believe I copied all of you on an email, seeking individuals to help the chief plan the Memorial Day Parade. I've only received one response so far on that, so we will have that on the agenda. I think by the 3rd of February, at your next meeting, it will be up to the board to decide whether you're gonna pursue with the parade or cancel it.
When's your next meeting for the parade, Chief? Do you have one? Are you gonna schedule one?
I'd be the only person next to you.
I'd go join you, come on.
What would you certainly call for next week? If they were down the column, you may date next week, close at 1:00, now, if you're sure of that break.
When did, you used to meet on, was it Wednesday nights, or?
Yes.
But we have Centennial on Tuesday night, do you want to have a meeting Wednesday night too, or?
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, if we, if we post one for meeting, you know, and advertise it as best we can, and see what happens, see what we get for, and if, if there's you and myself there, well, then I don't know how we can do it.
Very kind, actually.
Right, and that, I...
The people think.
Yep.
Really need five small volunteers?
Right, and, and many alternates.
Exactly, sure.
Yeah, oh, you do, no, I, I understand, so that's why I'm saying it, let's see what type of response we could get next week.
So, what date is that?
That's Wednesday, January 29th, do you want that at 7:00 or 6:00, or?
6:00 would be fine.
6:00 o'clock at the PD?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, at the police department.
Okay.
I can't, oh, I can't go to 29th, sorry. I forgot.
Do you want to do it 6:00 o'clock on Tuesday before the Centennial?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to be a long meeting, the first one, just to see, yep, get some people to fill in, and then we'll appoint them in our next meeting. So...
I did hear back from the insurance company with respect to the public pay... Um, I did hear back from the insurance company with respect to the public passageway on Hope Street. Um, their recommendation and their preference would be that the passageway be closed during the winter months.
Okay.
And that signs be posted on both ends of the passageway.
Okay.
Um...
And that clears of stuff?
And he said it doesn't clear us, but it's a much better alternative than...
You're gonna fight him chance in court.
Exactly.
Alright, I got it.
Um, so I will work with Brian, um, on that. But if the board would like to vote to, um, authorize Brian to put the signs up.
Alright, so I, I would look for a motion to authorize, uh, the highway department to install signs on the, uh, twenty-one Hope Street passageway to close the passageway during the, um, uh, months of November through, uh, the, um, April fifteenth, the same dates as the, uh, snow ban parking.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So you, uh, I'll...
You're gonna make the motion?
Make it every day and...
I can't make the motion. I can say what I, I'm looking for the motion to read.
Some of this...
Sorry. That's alright. So, okay.
Uh, one, one thing.
Mm-hmm.
Did we vote yet?
Well, we did, but, no, I didn't do a roll. I didn't do the roll.
Question on locking the gates.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is, is Brian gonna lock that gate?
Um, I did send an email out, um, asking Brian to have his crew, I guess there's no lock at this time, so they'll have to purchase the lock and they're gonna, um, lock just the one on the street side, not the center one.
Right.
But my understanding from the chief is that has also been open and there are, um, tracks in the snow, so vehicles have been going down there. So we will get that locked.
Okay. Alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, the last thing on my list is the, um, animal control vehicle. If you recall, we put a, um, an RFP out. We sent this to seventeen local used car dealers. We received one response.
Okay, awesome. I guess, I guess we don't have enough money.
Which actually was from, uh, locally right over here, from, uh, Oxbridge Auto.
Okay.
How much do you want, fifteen thousand?
Um, and he is offering a minivan.
Okay.
Uh, this is a two thousand eight Chevrolet Uplander, uh, for ten thousand and thirty-five dollars. Um, he does have the pictures and everything here. So I didn't know if the board wanted to pursue this. If you'd like me to have the animal control officer take a look at it or if you wanted to try something else.
I mean, I know he did mention to me that a four-wheel drive would be preferable. Cause, uh, what they, what they do is when, um, the police call and say there's a deer or...
Right.
Something in the road. You know, a dog, obviously, they try and find the owner.
Right.
A deer or, they drive it down the power line, leave it in the woods and nature takes its place.
Right, and I had that discussion, um, after he appeared at the meeting and, and stated that to me, cause that was the first I heard of it. My understanding is that's maybe happened once in the past several years. So I don't know that it's, maybe I think it's more of a want and not a need.
Alright. Well, I mean, if there's room in the back to put, uh...
Yep, that was part of the RFP, was that it had to be a certain size to put the, um...
It's got the hatchback type gate in the back. I mean, it looks, looks big enough for me. It's just the price, I don't know, seems a little bit on the high end.
You can negotiate with an, on an RFP, so.
Yeah, that?
He is expensive. He's, he's old, that's...
How many miles on it?
He's the same guy that owns the one in Uplands.
Yeah.
Following Sunday.
Let's see if he's good.
I mean, if somebody was nice enough just to donate, donate a van or anything, as long as it runs and it passes inspections, I don't think we would deny it.
I don't think we would either. Uh, sixteen miles per gallon.
Gotta worry about that, where do we go?
I don't know what the, yeah, oh, here it is. Way at the top, thirty thousand one hundred twenty-five miles.
Wow, it's nothing.
So it's got low miles.
Yeah.
It's old, but it's low miles. Well, it's six years old. Low miles. So that's only five thousand miles a year.
Price is a little steep.
Like a grandma's car.
We're paying for the low mileage, that's what he's, he's basing his price on, the low mileage.
We should at least Kelly Blue Book it, Brian, let's go see what it's actually worth.
Yeah. Run it through Kelly Blue Book, see what they say. I'm punching the exact mileage and, uh...
Uh, uh, what I would do is I would go into Kelly's Blue Book to find out what is worth.
So, so, Row, give me the facts of that again?
Why don't you just give me that?
Yeah, let me take a picture.
The very top, way at the header is the mileage.
I got you.
Yep.
We'll just take that under advisement for now.
Yeah.
Would you like me to get...
I would think, I would think if we're interested in Kelly Blue Book, if within reason, we would still send that out to another dealership or another garage and totally go through that with. Even though it's all inspections and all, that doesn't mean the vehicle doesn't need any repairs. So I would think we really value that vehicle. At that age, even if mileage is low, it still could be a million repairs.
Yep, absolutely.
That's, yeah, that was part of the RFP, they have to allow us to, to take it to where we wanna take it to.
Can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
There's, there is a garage in, in Oxbridge, not far away, that, that could evaluate it for us, I'm sure. J, J and J Automotive in Oxbridge.
Did we ask Imperial?
You're a Chevy dealer?
Yes.
Yeah, he didn't respond, huh?
They were on the bid list, yeah.
Huh. Isn't that odd?
I know.
Well, you know what? The, the dealer deal, you know, the manufacturer dealers, when they take trades, if they're more than a couple of years old, they, they auction them off to whoever. And that's where, that's where Oxbridge Auto and all these guys get their vehicles, is through those auctions.
Well, did you want me to get the Blue Book value and have it looked at within the next two weeks? So you can make a decision on the third, or?
Could.
Cause you are able to negotiate the price on an RFP, so.
Even if we negotiate the price, where's the money coming from?
Um, it was already, I think, agreed upon by the finance committee, it would be a reserve fund transfer.
Yep. We voted on this.
Yeah.
Before we even sent the bids out.
I understand that, but do we, alright, so we have the money saved somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so far.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask you, cause I know you're within the numbers, so.
I don't know, just, no, because we, uh, we wouldn't have bid it.
No, I know, I know.
We wouldn't have sent that out to bid if we didn't have available money. It's kinda like going to the jewelry store for a ring for your wife.
Well, I would go through, I would go through the motions, Helen, and find out. Get us a, a, a report back on... I mean, he might have thirty thousand miles and another guy takes a look at the whole box and...
Is he giving us a warrant to, to, Helen?
Yes.
He is?
Yep. Yep, that was part of the RFP too.
Yeah.
So that's what I would do.
And that's what the extra money is to pay for.
They have to buy the lemon law anyway. They would have to give you something.
Also, we don't know, do we maybe run a car fax report or find out if there's been a whack or?
Well, that's the whole thing, he was, he was gonna go through the whole motion.
Right, well, the Kelly Blue Book's one thing, car faxes, see if it's been, you know, where that called.
I think that might have been part of the RFP that they had to provide that if, if requested, so.
Of course, I don't know what to, when you swap your one you got, even, uh, to fix the one we have.
Right, but that's, that's, that's just...
BBT said it.
Right.
It's really beyond, they've Band-Aid it a few times already.
Right.
And it's beyond that now.
Right. I would say as long as it's clean and it...
Cause the underneath, the rock underneath is, is getting to a safety hazard now instead of an appearance.
No, no question we gotta swap it out.
Yeah.
Just, just make sure we don't throw good money at bad, right?
Right.
Yeah, we'll just do our due diligence, check it out, make sure it hasn't been whacked and goes down the road sideways or, you know.
Yep.
I definitely don't want Gary driving sideways.
Okay, so...
And, um, just the last thing, uh, not knowing what the weather will be in the morning, um, we will, um, review the we- weather situation early in the morning and if it appears to be bad and the staff is not comfortable driving in, we will close the building. That's it for my report.
Helen, I, I have a question, a question relative to, um, the NII report.
Mm-hmm.
They're looking for a response by February sixth.
Mm-hmm.
And I would suggest, I'd kinda like to see if you could have some kind of a workshop to address all these maintenance issues. And this would kinda fall into that, you know?
For all departments, or?
Well, no, like, town hall is in town.
Well, we, we, each department is, um, given a copy of the report and asked to address the issues. Mark in the box provided what they've done, when they did it, and get that back to me, um, in a timely manner, so that I can return the entire report to Maya. Um, and I think all of the town hall issues have already been addressed.
Just a question, is now the cost of doing these things?
Um, I know for the town hall, I honestly didn't evaluate specifically all the other departments, but I know for my own department, there was nothing huge. Um, the, the one last remaining thing is the curb cut, um, on the walkway, but I was waiting for Brian's assistance on that, so.
Couldn't that just be painted yellow?
It could be, I think I'd prefer to cut it.
But if we have a walkway, it's gotta be wheelchair accessible and even those hover ones won't make that curb.
So, um, I'm hoping he has some type of machine or equipment that can cut that. I think other than that, everything else was addressed. And I will, I always follow up with the other departments. Um, I give them a couple of weeks and if I don't hear back, I nag them.
Did you ever get rid of the bats?
No.
Well, they're gone now, cause it's winter. Now we're gonna...
They're taking a siesta right now.
Yeah, but they're south, so now what you gotta do, cause he, I had this problem. So the, so the exterminator said plug the holes that you know they're coming in. Well, in the winter, while they're gone. And then, of course, he told me put a bat house up.
Right.
In, somewhere in the area, so they'll go there, because they are good to have outside, not inside. And, uh, which I did, and I have hundreds of bats in my bat houses, none in my house. So it does work. Uh, but the only time to humanely get rid of them is in the winter, plug your holes. And when they come back from Florida, they, they find a new home. They're gonna come back to that area, automatically. They know right where they were last year, so don't disturb the bats.
The reason why we haven't really addressed it is, I've gotten some conflicting information from different vendors, but ultimately I was told there are so many holes in the masonry that they're, they're gonna find their way in.
Yeah. We don't have money to repoint the building.
Yeah, so... Two of the vendors told me it was a, a waste of money for us to do anything, so.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the way bats are, they're smart. They know the right way to come back. Okay. Well, while we're on, turn it, well, no, we're not on that situation now, but while we were talking about unregistered vehicles,
Mm-hmm.
what's the story with the pickup truck and, and the old, uh, cheese car?
Yep, once we have all three, um, I'd be asking the board to vote to, um, surplus them.
Okay.
I'm just waiting till I have all three, so we can do it at the same time.
Cause we got that little red Chevy, right? Was it?
Yeah, Ford.
What, a Ford?
Yeah, Ford.
Then we got the white cheese car and then the red pickup.
No, the red car is not sure what's on.
Pause it, alright. So we just got, okay. Okay. Not that we're gonna make money on it, you know, probably gonna cost us money to get rid of them, but whatever we can recover, we recover. Okay. Anything else on your report?
Nope.
What about the board's schedule? Do we need to vote?
Yep, that's under, um, new business.
So no old business tonight? Kinda just went over it all. Alright, so new business, this is the special annual town meetings, the warrant schedule. So everybody read it, we gotta vote on...
Yep, so you'd be voting to, uh, call the special and annual town meetings for Monday, May twelfth, which is per town bylaws, always the second Monday in May, for six-thirty and seven o'clock. And you'd be voting to open the warrants, um, effective immediately.
Right, bless you.
Bless.
I will make the motion to open the special annual town meeting warrant for May twelfth, two thousand fourteen. So I'll second that.
All in favor? That's as, as written on this schedule.
I imagine it'll be posted somewhere.
That's it? It's good there, alright, so members forum, nobody? Nobody's on the agenda.
We're gonna vote on that, I think, right?
We did?
We did?
You just, didn't you make a motion?
Made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, then, I thought I said all in favor of that.
Well, I was ready.
Alright, go ahead, all in favor, alright. So, sorry about that. You know, hurry. Not that this isn't fun.
You can't wait to show up.
So we have a final public forum.
Nope, and signatures is just the minutes that you've voted on.
Yep. So our next regular meeting is February third, Monday, February third, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM, and that'll be here at the Longfellow Municipal Center. And we will do the signatures and then adjourn.
Signature.
One signature this week.
That's it.
Was it last week we had?
Um, I think you're on that.
I'm on, I don't know if I needed to vote to accept the minutes.
Oh, if you weren't here, no.
No.
Then, yeah, don't bother.
We had three, so...
Three and a half hours for most.
Oh.
Yep. Okay. Everybody signed, alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
Who made it?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Don't, don't nod, a second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Drive safe.